Unless they don't see it.
Hello, Lee.
Hey, how are you?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Good. Eric.
Hey, how's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good. Have a little construction going on in my house. I had to reorganize here and that, but I think we're up and running.
Good. Kimberly Moore, you have your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Steve, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Steve Moore and Kimberly Moore. 10 squat people. We're here for that discussion about squaw peak.
Yeah, that's later on the agenda.
Oh, how much later? Should we?
Um.
About?
It's hard to tell. At least I have. Could be longer.
Okay.
Leave it on and.
Right, we're here.
You're perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. You're welcome. How are you, Ed?
Good.
Okay, it is six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's June 16, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body, this meeting of the Great Barrington Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL 7C 38, Section 20F, after notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body may transmit the meeting through any medium. Beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by the town, by CTSB, by the Berkshire Eagle, Berkshire Edge, and other members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. First thing we have is. I will just, because Garfield's not here, I will just say that right now, Ed Abrams, Lee Davis, Eric Gabriel, and myself, Steve Bannon are here. We are expecting Garfield. A motion to convene as sewer commissioners, please.
I'd make a motion to convene as sewer commissioners.
Second.
It's a all votes, all votes are roll call. So Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Yes.
Lee.
Hi.
And I. Mark, did you have something you want to add to it?
To the abatements?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would just like to request that the abatement request for 23 Getting Street be conditioned upon further review from public works staff. Need a little more information before we can recommend this be approved.
Mark, could you repeat that address? Which one was that?
23 Getting Street. It should be down near the bottom of the list.
So do I have a motion?
I have a motion to accept the sewer abatements with conditions on 23 Getting Street as recommended by the town manager.
Second.
So any discussion? Saying no discussion?
I got a question. So these abatements here, these are people currently asking this, this year moving forwards. Sewer bill or is this? This is this coming sewer bill.
Now, this is from January 1st through June 30th.
Of 2022.
2021.
2020. Okay. Sounds good. So, yes. All right.
Okay, roll call vote. Eric.
Hi.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. A motion to reconvene as select board, please.
I make a motion to reconvene as select board.
Second.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. We have five minutes. Five sets of minutes in our packet to have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. Go ahead.
Uh, March and April, I was not involved with the select board at the March and April 2021. So.
Okay, let's do those two first, please.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2021, and April 26, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Eric is recusing himself. So Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, three with one recused. Next motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 1st, November 29th, and of 2021, and January 10th of 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Select boards announcements or statements, Eric?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Ed?
Nothing.
Lee?
Just to let everyone know, the meeting of the Community Preservation Committee will be held tomorrow at 5:00 PM to continue our discussions of the Step Two applications.
Thank you. Town managers are report.
Okay, thanks, Steve. And I just wanted to mention Garfield should be joining us momentarily. He just emailed looking for a copy of the link, so. Who's Sonic Water Works? I'd like to start there this evening. And I mentioned last week during our Monday meeting that I provide an update on the halo acidic acid concern for village water users after our health department had an opportunity to connect with DEP and specifically the drinking water program there. So this evening I asked Rebecca Jersey, our health agent, to join us and provide an update. So I'm gonna look for her and go ahead and promote her now. Okay, Rebecca, you're good to go.
Hey, everybody. So as Mark said, I'm here to just share a little bit of information about what we know so far about the violation whose the tonic water works notified its customers about. And yes, I did have to call DEP to find out what halo acidic acid five is. But essentially, it is a chlorine byproduct, and it forms when chlorine binds to organic materials found in the raw water source. So in a sense, the presence of, I'm just gonna call it HAA5. That's the abbreviation that DEP uses, but it's halo acidic acid five. So in a sense, when you see it, when the presence of HAA5 is evidence that chlorine is, is doing what it's intended to do by binding to the organic materials in order to sterilize any bacteria that might be pathogenic in the, in the water. And surface water sources like round pond as opposed to groundwater sources typically have more organic materials and therefore need more chlorine to ensure consumer safety. So I just want to spend two minutes giving my interpretation of DEP's violation. Because they, or how they're categorizing it as a violation, because I found it confusing. So I imagine customers might have found it confusing too. So the, the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection Safety Standard is called a maximum contaminant level. So you'll see it noted on their report as MCL. So the MCL is determined by, for this, this contaminant, HAA5. This is determined by an average of the last four water samples. And DEP requires whose tonic water works to submit samples quarterly. So the average is from a full year of samples prior. And the maximum contaminant level for HAA5 is 60 parts per billion. So it's a violation if at any point the average of the last four samples is over 60 parts per billion. So going into the weeds a little bit here, a recent sample can individually be over 60 parts per billion, but it's not necessarily a violation if the previous three samples taken were relatively low to bring that average down. So the last sample taken, I think, in September or October was high enough to trigger that average being over 60 parts per billion. And DEP hasn't issued a formal notice of noncompliance to who's tonic water works yet. But they've assured me that when they do, the health department and the town manager's office will be copied on that notice. But when I spoke to them last week, they were, they were transparent enough to send the language to me that they will probably use on their notice of noncompliance. So I'm just going to read it to you what potential action requirements may be for whose tonic water works. So number one, immediate actions taken to reduce the level of the contaminant identified at the location of, at the location, and to provide a memo documenting these, these actions. So actually, DEP, excuse me, sent a letter to whose tonic works today giving them until March 9th to submit an operation evaluation form. And then number two is within 180 days of the, of the maximum contaminant level exceedance or enforcement issued by DEP, the Public Water Supply, whose tonic water works submits a report by a Massachusetts engineered, a registered professional engineer to to provide recommendations for preventing future violations. So essentially, within six months, whose tonic water works will need to submit an engineered plan on how they plan to prevent this violation in the future. Oh, I guess. And I just want to say again that because this is an average, I do expect this to be a violation that whose tonic water works will have to address or it'll come up at least for the next six months since the last sample was, was pretty high. Did that make it more confusing? I hope that was helpful.
That was helpful.
Okay, good.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we, I know you said the, the last sample was pretty high. Do we, do we know? I, in the paper, it said the average was 106, if I'm not mistaken, but I was wondering if we knew what the numbers were on the previous, on, on all four of the samples that triggered this.
Yes. If you just give me two minutes, I can find it in my email. DEP sent me the last two years' worth of samples. I can send them to you.
That would be great.
But I know that the last two, the last one was 65 parts per billion. And then the one in August was 103 parts per billion. But I do have all eight samples for 2021 and then 2020.
Rebecca, can you just post that also on the website, just so? Rebecca, can you just post that also on the website, just so everyone?
Sure. And one thing that I I thought was helpful that D E P. Clarified was that this sample, whereas for their other water sampling, they have to take different samples along the distribution lines. This for this one contaminant or this one substance that they're testing for is taken from only one location in whose tonic.
Do we know where that location is?
It's ten Depot Street.
Lee?
Yeah, um, thank you very much. This is really, really helpful, Rebecca. Um, so it's it's nice to know that they have a plan moving forward that they'll be addressing this. Um, my question is about the, uh, I believe it's like a a pilot study, um, studying the magnesium levels. And I just want to know how this could quite affect that, or does this have any relation to that? That initiative that they're currently undertaking?
Um, I don't know if they'll be able to just merge the two engineered plans. But from my conversation with Giorgia Doherty, it's going to be in addition to so two separate plans.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Rebecca.
You, Rebecca. So moving on, thank you, Rebecca. Uh, moving on, update from the W E B Du Bois Legacy Committee. Gwendolyn Vance is here this evening to provide you an update from the committee. So I'm just promote her.
Hello.
Hey, Glenn.
Hi. Um, so thanks. I think a few members of the committee are here, but I will, um, tell you all what we have planned for Du Bois Day, uh, on behalf of the town. So, um, thank you all again for approving Du Bois Day as a town holiday. Um, the theme that the committees come up with is sacred journey of Dr. W B. De Bois, native son, global scholar. It's our fifth annual since we started at the hundred and fiftieth birthday anniversary. Um, the Mahawi Theater has come in as a really strong partner again. And due to COVID constraints, we're, um, having a three part, um, town sponsored, um, program on the twenty first, the twenty second and the twenty third that will all be pre recorded um, and edited in collaboration with the Mahawi and they'll air the premiere at five thirty. So I'll just walk through each of those events on Monday. Um, we hope to have a welcome by Steve and your colleagues here from the select board. Um, and then so the, you know, the work in history of the legacy committee. And then are some local clergy that will be doing a blessing and then opening talks for of real, uh, Du Bois advocates in our community. So Dr. Kendra Fields will be speaking on behalf of the Clinton Church Restoration. President Dennis Powell will be speaking on behalf of N D L A C P. I'll be speaking on behalf of my other community role at Bridge. And A J. Enchil will be speaking, um, the Berkshire Black Economic Council. So those four will be sort of opening up the festival. And then we I'm really excited to announce that our keynote is Dr. George T. French, Jr., and he's the Clark Atlanta University President. Um, so that's a real honor that he's going to be our keynote. Um, so that's the first broadcast. And then the second broadcast is the really highlighting the theme sacred journeys. So we'll have the sorrow songs, those spiritual songs, um, again, premiering through from Wanda Houston and Dr. Mary now Morgan, they'll do an edited down version of the program they've done in the past. Um, some of our local voices of people born and raised in African American um, community of Great Barrington will speak or sing or do spoken words. So we have Guillermo Delano Burrows. And we have Leah Reed, and then we'll have other youth voices from the Du Bois Middle School, wherever Street Youth Project's been invited, um, Bridge, and again, um, Williams College, we hope. So that's, um, that. And then the third day, which is Du Bois Day, February twenty third will again want a town introduction. Some of the keynote highlights will be brought forward. And then, uh, Dr. Emily Williams on the committee has curated a panel that has Dr. Barbara Combs from Clark Atlanta University, Dr. Melvin Ramig from Morehouse College and Dr. Alex Pierre of Spelman College. And those, um, people will be on a panel moderated by Dr. Williams. That will be actually, um, if you can be live on Zoom, it's a live recording on February second, um, that then will be broadcast into a program on the twenty third. So we hope you all can join that discussion. It'll be really enriching. And then we're actually the Du Bois Award will be announced. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say who that is now. So I'll email you guys, but I don't know if I'm supposed to announce it or not. I didn't check. So we're so there's a Du Bois Award, uh, going also being given. And then in the evening, um, we will have a fourth video um, with a sort of, uh, special guests and families, uh, family members of the Du Bois descendants there for a program at the Mahawi. It'll be limited capacity again because of COVID. And that's related to, um, other community events that are falling under the town's Legacy Festival like we've done in other years, but hosted by community partners. So Jacob's Pillow has an African drumming, um, program happening, and that's part of the ten by ten festival that's happening further north in the county. But also bringing a piece of that into the Legacy Festival. And then another piece that's extremely important for you all to know that the town, um, really should feel proud of is that um, Dr. Du Bois's only grandchild, Yolande Du Bois Williams Irving passed away in November. And although that was very sad, but the the good news is that she decided that she wanted to come back home and be buried along at the Du Bois, um, gravesite. And that wasn't her plan a few years ago, but she was really honored by the work that Great Barrington had done to lift up Du Bois's legacy. So she made that decision. Um, so, uh, Jeff Peck, her son, reached out to ask me to help organize the memorial service. And so I've been working on that with the family and her colleagues from Xavier University. And our local folks like, uh, Rich Atwood and and the town staff and Finnery and Stevens to to get ready to do a memorial service at um, that will be at both First Congregational Church and obviously at the grave site. Um, what I want you all to know is that um, N W C P. Presidents from a few chapters are coming. Um, we have the presiding ministers coming from N W A C P. Houston. He also has a church congregation there. They come in as a co sponsor. We have Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee and Congressman Al Green. And on Dr. King's, um, descendants and St. James Weldon Johnson descendants and a world renowned gospel singer coming. So there will be a big memorial service on the nineteenth of that of that Du Bois Festival week. And, um, a lot of people will be coming to town and there'll be some of the folks that we wanted to have that extra showing at the Mahawi. Um, there is also a play that Shakespeare and Company is helping put on Knock Me a Kiss, and it's a play about Dr. Du Bois and his daughter. And it's a different side of Dr. Du Bois. We have been lifting him up as a scholar and an activist. Um, and this is a side of him as a father, part of the Harlem Renaissance. And, um, it's going to be a really great play on the eighteenth. So it's a very exciting, um, week that we have in store. And, uh, I think that's it. I don't know if there are any questions, but I think that those are the high points.
Well, thank you very much. The select board will be represented on the eighteenth, on the twenty first and twenty third. I'll be there. Um, we'll talk to other members who may want to speak, but we'll.
Yeah.
We will.
On the nineteenth, the nineteenth, right?
Nineteenth, nineteen.
Yes, yes.
Definitely will. I will be there on the nineteenth and we'll work it out with all the select board members. It might be nice on the for the twenty first taping, if all of us were on stage and one of us spoke. So we'll work that out.
Good. I want us all to be, uh, really proud of the work of this select board and our community and then all the activists and scholars that have worked on this for a really long time because this is really going to be a monumental moment.
Yeah, and thank you, Gwendolyn, for, you know, the heavy lift for everyone involved in this. So it's it's just such a momentous opportunity and and thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions of Glenn? Thank you again, Glenn. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. It's good to see you all.
You too. Licenses and permits, Steam Noodle Cafe LLC for an annual common Vic at two eighty six Main Street. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, grant the annual common visual license to Mister and Mrs. Enziga of Steam Noodle Cafe LLC at two eighty six Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, someone has their hand up, so we will. Maybe a representative. Yeah, it's the representative. That's great. Go ahead. If you'd like to know a little bit about your plans, that would be wonderful.
Well, I just I had put that up in preparation, assuming there may be questions. Do you?
We'd love to hear a little bit of your plans.
Well, the initial phase will be takeout only through the conveniently located window. But, uh, once the larger renovations on the dining room are done, it will be, uh, a proper dine in experience. We will be applying for, uh, um, a beer and wine liquor license and and there are, we will be doing a kind of a sake bar, you know, pending all the appropriate approvals, of course. And that, uh, do that's the main the main bullet points on what's going to be new.
Thank you. So I had a motion by Lee. Did I have a second by Ed?
Yes.
Um, any questions? Roll call vote, Garfield, welcome.
Thank you, I.
Uh, Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen Beckwith, the Great Barrington Fish a game, get fish and game association for ten for ten one day liquor licenses for the following event. So we'll do these one at a time. Um, ice fishing derby, February twelfth, two thousand twenty two, with February twenty six, two thousand twenty two as an alternate date if needed due to weather. And the time is actually going to be eleven A M. To six P M. Do I have a motion to approve?
I, oops, sorry. I make a motion to approve the, uh, one of, uh, day liquor license for the following event to Karen Beckwith of Great Barrington Fishing Game for the ice fishing derby on February twelfth, two thousand twenty two, with alternative date of February twenty six, two thousand twenty two, from eleven A M. To six P M.
Karen, do you have anything you want to say? Any advertising or are you happy with us just approving?
No, I'm happy with you just approving.
Thank you, Karen. Any discussion from the board? Any questions? Roll call, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, next is a Super Bowl party, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, from three P M. To ten P M.
I make a motion to approve the one day liquor license to Karen Beckwith of Great Barrington Fishing Game for the following event, the Super Bowl party on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, from three P M. To ten P M.
Second.
I hope the Super Bowl is over by ten. I can never stay awake then.
Neither can we.
It's any questions? Having on?
No.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, roll call, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, uh, ham shoots Sunday, Sundays beginning February twentieth and ending April tenth, two thousand twenty two, from noon to six P M. Motion?
I make a motion to grant, uh, Karen Beckwith of the Great Barrington Fishing Game Association, a liquor license uh, for the following events, ham shoots on Sundays beginning February twentieth and ending on April tenth, two thousand twenty two, from nine to six P M.
Noon.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. From, uh, thank you, uh, noon to six P M. Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, I would love to know where the ham shoot is. I have no idea what that is.
Karen?
Uh, we just shoot shoot targets and the one closest to the bullseye wins a ham.
Simple enough, thank you.
I always wondered that too. Thank you.
I had to ask once if they're actually shooting at the ham, yeah.
Uh, roll call vote, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you, Karen, very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
You are. Lantern House Motel requesting an annual in holders license for two fifty six Stockbridge Road.
I make a motion.
Well, it's Kate's on the line, so let's, Kate, go ahead.
Hi, Attorney Kate McCormick. McCormick, Martin, Marcus, I'm here on behalf of G B M A M one LLC, uh, for the Lantern House Motel. They're the new owners of the Lantern House Motel. And, um, the they're still looking to do the same that the old, um, hotel has done fourteen rooms. Um, currently, there's a house and fourteen rooms on the property. Um, they're going to be doing some renovations and, um, moving forward getting those rooms back on the market. If I can answer any specific questions, let me know.
Thank you, Kate. Let's have a motion first.
I make a motion to grant an annual in holders license for Francisco Javier Arango of G B M A M one LLC for the Lantern House Motel.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Yeah.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Very Tanes of Extra Specialties for an annual common victor for two twenty six Pleasant Street. So I think I saw them here. Scott, do you want to say anything? A little promotion? Just unmute yourself, Scott, if you'd like to speak.
Uh, hi, this is Cherry here.
Hi.
I left my laptop over in whose tonic tonight. So, um, we're super excited to be, uh, opening our second extra specialties over in whose tonic. Um, and, um, we plan, are also excited to have our own commercial tea lab there where we'll be, uh, producing more of our own teas and, uh, just really can't wait to get open. We employ young adults with special needs.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant an annual common victor, uh, to Sherry Tanes of Extra Specialties at two two six Pleasant Street.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Good luck to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before I forget, uh, we had six, seven panelists and forty six attendees. It's gone down a little bit, but that's where we were at the height. New business. Appointed treasure collector. Appoint treasure collector Alicia Doolin as custodian of properties. Mark, do you want to lead us through this?
Sure. Uh, this is really just a housekeeping matter here. Uh, Karen Fink, our former treasure collector, and then Sandy Larkin before her, uh, served in this capacity, just trying to find Alicia and.
Yeah, I can get it.
Okay. So Alicia is planning on, uh, giving us an update this evening on our surplus properties, just a a real brief update. Uh, but in at this time, I just asked that you, uh, appoint Alicia to this position and then she'll roll right into her update.
Okay, do I have a moment?
I make a motion to appoint treasurer collector Alicia Doolin as custodian of properties.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Go ahead, Alicia.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I just wanted to give kind of a quick update on where we are with town owned properties, um, that have been foreclosed on. So currently we have twelve town owned properties that we foreclosed on and, um, back in December of two thousand nineteen, Karen had come to the board for approval to auction six, six properties and, um, that process kind of stalled. Uh, you, you guys approved all, well, she she had, I think, eight, but you approved six of them. Um, so I have that list and I've contacted Sullivan and Sullivan Auctioneers, um, and I have a meeting set up in two weeks to meet with, um, Mary Ann from Sullivan and Sullivan. And uh, she says, I told her we have six currently and she said, I sent her over a list and she said she thinks we can hold an auction for these six properties in um, March, in late March. So I'm hoping for late March to get um, all, all of those on auction and um, it's, it's just a good time to, to sell right now um, any of these properties because of the market right now. So there may be um, more coming in the future.
Any questions?
Do we know the state of disrepair or repair to these homes and?
This, some of them are just pieces of land. I think three of them are just pieces of land. And um, let's see, I do have notes on them. Hold on one second. Um, so yeah, so the, of the ones that, that um, are not, that do have houses on them, there's, out of the six, two of them have houses and um, they are in need of renovation, but not, they're not in such disrepair that you couldn't um, live there and renovate them.
Will you tell me, Ashley, again, what, what happened to the other six? You said there's 12. Six went where, please, or?
Six is the, a six is the number that the board approved back in December of 2019 that could be auctioned. So I'm just um, restarting that process of getting them actually auctioned. Um, and then the other six um, haven't bought, been brought before the board to auction yet, but I plan on doing that at some point soon.
All right. Is this open to the public or can anyone?
Yeah, it gets advertised. It will be advertised for um, I believe it's two weeks before the auction actually happens. It goes in the newspaper. It's open to um, anybody um, unless you're a town employee or family.
So that was the, uh, basic question I would like to know, and I don't know if it's the right form or I have to ask someone else, but um, I always wondered if this is something the Great Barrington Affordable Housing uh, Trust Fund could go, uh, uh, bid on.
So I believe that um, these are ones that had been just the property, the six properties that will be um, auctioning first, had been discussed um, at previous meetings. Uh, I, I wasn't in attendance because this was back in 2019 when Karen did this, and I think that um, these six props, six properties were not on the list to keep for affordable housing. Um, we do have some of those. Um, and we do have a new foreclosure that just happened that would be um, I, I spoke with Chris with and Mark about maybe using for affordable housing, but these six properties were not on that list.
The ones that are, can we get that information from the Affordable Housing Committee or to Fred Clark or?
Yeah, so can I give a more general answer? In the past, um, Affordable Housing Trust has asked us not to put some properties on auction and then they then control it and keep it. So they, that's it. It is in the pipeline to consider that. They ask us and we do that.
Right, but when would we know? That, I guess I don't know when I would have that or that we would have that information.
Well, the Affordable Housing Trust, it works through them and they make the decision whether they are interested in the property. If they're not, then we auction it off.
Thank you.
Lee.
I guess, uh, Garfield kind of answered my, my question, so I am concerned um, and hopeful that at least, you know, a few of those could go in that direction of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so thank you.
Any other questions?
I just liked that we did hold back on uh, moving both 40 Grove Street, which is or was uh, in the Affordable Housing Trust hands. And then also a property on East Sheffield Road because we had, at that time, a discussion about uh, holding that property back for a potential dog park and/or boat launch. So we will have this conversation publicly when we bring more properties forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Next on the agenda is um, a request from neighbors of Squaw Peak Road to discuss a, discuss a potential street name change. Just to be clear, we will not vote on this tonight. If this is of interest to the board and the neighbors, we'll bring this forward, but tonight's a discussion. So we will start off, um, Mark, do you want to go ahead with this?
Sure. Sorry about that. It looks like we just lost Ed.
No, uh, we lost Ed? Well, I got Jeff going and.
Okay, so yeah, I can uh, get this uh, conversation started. Uh, so a few months ago, we received a request from, from uh, Mr. Rothenberg, who's on the line with us this evening. He's a resident of Squaw Peak Road, uh, asking that the town consider a name change for that road. So in your packet this evening, we did send a letter out. We put a copy of it in there. Uh, we sent a letter out to, I believe, 18 homes on Squaw Peak Road. Just letting everyone know uh, that we'd be having this neighborhood meeting tonight. I don't expect the board will make any decisions tonight. It's really just the beginning of the conversation. So uh, Mr. Rothenberg, if you'd like to.
There's another person with their hand up, Jonathan Fertel. Is, is that someone I should promote, Mr. Rothenberg, who's?
Uh, I mean, certainly any of our neighbors or.
Well, I'm gonna let them speak. I'll let you go first and then I'll recognize the neighbors.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, Mr. Bannon and members of the select board for adding this to your agenda tonight and for inviting me to speak. Um, I, I really came to better appreciate in recent years that the word squaw is widely considered to be a derogatory and pejorative word, especially to members of the tribal community. Um, we can see that as evidenced by the fact that the trustees of reservations recently changed the name of both the Squaw Peak and the Squaw Peak Trail uh, here in Great Barrington. Um, and also, as recently as the end of 2021, the federal government prohibited the use of squaw in all uh, federal lands and directed through the Department of the Interior that any federal lands or trails uh, that currently contain the word squaw be renamed to something um, that is not considered to be uh, offensive. So as a proud resident of Great Barrington and a homeowner uh, on our street since 2013, it seemed that it was an important uh, and, and, and reasonable time to align uh, with what's happening in the world around us and to consider the name uh, Squaw Peak as something that would be less offensive. Um, to that end, I was in touch with the Stockbridge Muncie Band of Mohican Indians, uh, which is the uh, tribal community on whose historic land our community sits. And their Director of Cultural Affairs, Heather Bruegel, uh, wholeheartedly endorsed the concept of our changing the name of our street. Um, so I'd like to close by saying that this is certainly not the easy road to take. Uh, changing the name of our street, changing all of our stationery and all the effort that would come along with that, but sometimes the right thing is not the easiest nor the most expedient thing. But I do objectively, as but one member of our community, uh, believe that changing the name of our street uh, to something less offensive, perhaps simply Peak Road um, is the right thing to do at the right time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna uh, allow us a few people to talk first. So uh, Jonathan Fertel.
Yes, thank you very much. So uh, first of all.
Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Jonathan Fertel, 6 Squaw Peak Road.
Thank you.
Uh, so first of all, I wanted to, to say that I appreciate uh, the, the speech that Mr. Rothenberg just made. I and my wife are in agreement. Uh, the one addition that I would like to, to, to put uh, on the agenda is that we currently do not have a street sign. And that's, that's actually created some problems. So I think from a timing standpoint, the sooner we can come to an agreement and not replace something that would have to be replaced again, may make sense. But I just wanted to throw it out there that as a neighbor, we, we are in support.
Thank you very much. Okay, next would be uh, Ruth Friedman.
Can you hear me? I, I've got.
We can.
Okay. Uh, my husband, uh, Barry Wasserman and I um, own uh, 3 Squaw Peak Road. Um, our family has actually owned that house since 1987. Uh, we strongly support this initiative. Um, so I'm very appreciative of you bringing it up. Um, and I guess my question is to the board and, and to the town manager, if you could quickly outline what the pros, um, excuse me, the process would be um, for changing the name. Um, have you, I assume you've done that before in town. If not, um, what the standards would be for coming up with a name? Uh, what needs to be done to register a new name and all that? And the extent to which it would affect and would the town assist in changing deeds? Um, so our house is properly listed um, and all that.
Yeah. So what we want to do is first to hear from the neighbors. Then we will outline a process at another meeting because we don't have the process yet. We didn't, we wanted to hear from the neighbors, make the request formal, and then we will go forward with that. This doesn't, this does not happen very often. If I can remember correctly, I think I've done this once in my whole term and I may be imagining that. So it's not something that we've done very often.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Natasha, and excuse me if I'm pronouncing that wrong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
You are pronouncing it correctly. My full name is Natasha Dockry-Levak. I live with my family at 2 Squaw Peak Road, right on the corner next to the sign that is no longer there. So I'm glad my neighbor brought that up. I just want to thank Jeff for his efforts and I wanted to voice our support for the name change. And I, I know that this meeting, we're not going to be making any decisions about names, but I support the, the change to Peak Road.
Thank you very much. Mary Eastland?
Hey, I'm Mary Eastland and I'm at 8 Squaw Peak Road. We've been here since the seventies. I heartily support this. Um, our suggestion for a name would be Rocky Hill Road because of all the rocks up here. The only thing I do not want to have is the, the name that they have changed the name to Squaw Peak to. I don't think we need to define any kind of virtuous woman or non-virtuous woman. I think we should just have a neutral name that does not describe any woman. So anyway, I'm, I'm very supportive of that and um, if I can be of any assistance, I'm here at 8 Squaw Peak. Thanks.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, Kimberly and Stephen Moore? Just unmute yourself.
Okay, uh, we've been here since 1981. Um, I guess we're too old to undergo changes. And you know, I wrote down the list of things that need to be done. I think the first man who spoke mentioned stationary, which seems relatively frivolous when you consider someone mentioned deeds, the census, our delivery system, insurance, doctors, dentists, hospital, passports, driver's license, social security, Medicare, uh, contacts, email, car registrations, newspaper, bill, uh, wills, trusts, bank accounts, obviously stationary, uh, warranties, Google Map. Who is going to incur these expenses for these changes and who has the time to take this on when we're all busy? And it also would expose older people like ourselves to have to stand, we don't do things online usually. So to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles, to stand in line at, for passport renewal or change, uh, to have to go through all this is a major, major headache. And the other thing I wish to say is, let's take the word squaw. This is not an American word. Is that correct? It originated with the Algonquin Indians, if I'm not mistaken. The original meaning of that word was not demeaning to women. In the 1950s, it became a slang word that meant vagina. Now, I don't find vagina offensive, but if men find it offensive and certain women find it offensive, that's fine because we have four streets with the name Nob in Great Barrington and Nob is slang for penis in the British language. So where are we going to draw the line? Christian Hill should be out, Pope Street should be out. Uh, we're going to be so woke, we are going to be ahead of the game. But why? Why now? Because is there a movement underfoot that looks like it's cool to be woke? Is that what we want to be? We got to show our wokeness. How about giving money as a town of Great Barrington to the Indian tribes? What about something that has more meaning? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Linda Josephs?
Uh, Linda Josephs, um, I live at 11 Squaw Peak. Uh, been here almost 30 years. Um, and I've actually been waiting for this to happen for the last two years, so I, I'm not surprised that it was brought up, either brought up by somebody on our road or um, someone who lives close by. So yeah, I know the Department of Interior has made all the changes and there are Squaw Peaks, Squaw Creeks that have been changed to politically correct creek, which I don't think is great for us. Um, I agree with Kimberly. I think it's going to be a nightmare for us to change everything and I'm really, really concerned about that. Um, especially today. I think, I think the majority of people agree. I don't disagree. I, I doesn't bother me. A lot of people don't even know what the word squaw peak. I have to explain, I have to, uh, espell it to them. So um, I think it's just going to be a nightmare and I'm selfishly um, afraid of that. But on the other hand, the way things are going, I don't see us not changing it.
Thank you very much. Any, any other person want to comment on this before? So what uh, we usually just allow someone to speak once, but I'll always gets me in trouble when I allow twice, but go ahead, Jonathan Fertel, very quickly, please.
Oh, thank you. I, I just wanted to throw one thing in there be, because I know that there's some difference of opinion. And again, this is Jonathan Fertel from 6 Squaw Peak Road. Uh, one thought that I have, having spent much time in New York where oftentimes there are dual names for a street, potentially there is a, a way where they could both be effective street names, whereas we're out where one is the primary street name. So just wanted to throw that out there and that might be an opportunity to, to have a, a dual name for the street for now to mitigate the, the future um, challenges.
Thank you very much. So what'll happen next, and Mark, you can help me with this, is we'll come back with an outline of the process and then the select board will, I think it requires a public hearing, but we'll find that out. And we'll, once we know the process, um, the select board will discuss this and make a decision whether they're interested in moving forward with this. Any questions?
Just once more, thanks to the select board and thanks to my neighbors who took time to join tonight. Appreciate you all.
Thank you very much.
And, and if I could just add one thing.
Yeah, please.
We'll, we'll get a letter out to the residents, uh, all 18, again, when we uh, take this conversation up for uh, continued talks.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next, under previous business, is a continued from January 18th, the short-term rental bylaw. So um, a couple of things I want to accomplish tonight. Is like to have Chris guide us through the purposes. He's come up and I have not seen them and he's come up with uh, recommendation or not a recommendation really, just a talking points. And then there in our packet is a memo of a compromise and I'd like to go through those. And I don't want to, I don't want to write this tonight. Um, the last thing we need to do is write for two or three hours tonight, a bylaw. I think what we do is we, if we can agree on concepts, which we weren't successful last time, but if we can, we'll have Chris come back with some wording that we can then discuss. So Chris, you want to start with, uh, a, and I don't want this to go tonight, a couple hours. It's, I, I think we're either going to accomplish what we set out to do or not in, in a specified period of time. Um, so Chris, you want to start with the purposes?
Sure. Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everybody. So I, what I tried to do was, was take the discussion from your last meeting uh, about the purposes and uh, look at the bulleted list that Lee had sent along to the board for tonight and try to bring those together. And you know, I'm just sort of uh, throwing those out there now at this, at this point for the board to consider and may, maybe if we can agree on purposes with that, that would be a good thing. Um, I, I can put it on the screen. Maybe that'll be helpful for everybody.
Yes.
If I am able. If I am able. Can everybody see that?
Yes, we can.
So this melds a few of, uh don't read it yet, don't read it till I try to explain it. This melds a few things that that you were talking about last time and a few of the aspects of the bylaws that it seemed like you were taking as uh possible examples, including Stockbridge and Lennox. So uh it begins citing the authority of the general laws, which allow towns to pass their own bylaws to regulate short-term rentals. That's an important kind of statement that we have the authority to do this as a town. Uh also in the first sentence is that statement uh which you saw in some of the other samples to balance private neighborhood and municipal interests. So I just think that is a good way to put it. Saw something similar in Lennox and Stockbridge laws. And including and trying to put these three bullets in order of private neighborhood and municipal interests. Number one or bullet, first bullet, sort of a private interest. Um and we know this is important from people that we've, we've gotten emails from and we've heard uh during uh meetings, planning board, housing committee and select board. We know it's important for folks uh who live in town, maybe underemployed, uh people who, you know, um you know, may be retired, et cetera. To enable residents to earn extra money from their properties to better afford to live here, maintain their properties and contribute to the community. So that's kind of a private interest. Um a neighborhood interest, uh community-wide minimizing public health, pit, public safety and health risks, I think. Uh no matter which version we've seen uh over these last few months, I think we can all agree on that. And then finally, I think stick my neck out here a little bit, that we can agree that turning the housing stock into uh primarily or exclusively uh commercial businesses uh could be harmful to the overall housing stock. And so the last interest there is to is deterring commercial interest from buying housing to use primarily short-term rental businesses. So this doesn't, this does not touch on commercial uses in residential zones, uh which was an objection that we discussed last meeting. It doesn't distinguish between uh primary homes or second, secondary homes. It's, these are, I think, purposes that are pretty straightforward and that we could agree on and that we could actually write a bylaw to uh to further these purposes. So put those out there for your discussion.
Let's hear some discussion from the select board.
Um yeah, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, for doing that. Um just, yeah, just to give a kind of a bit of background how the Lennox bylaw ended up um here. Um you know, dur- during the five months that I've been working on this and since bringing this to the the housing subcommittee and then to the planning board. You know, I've done a lot of discovery and talked to many citizens and res- residents, um local businesses, realtors and you know, ha- have looked to communities um for their guidance to see, you know, what's worked and what hasn't worked. And Lennox is one that I've always returned to and I have returned to recently. You know, have talked to the town administrator and a member of the planning board. So uh with the the points that um I had asked to be included in tonight's agenda packet. I'm, you know, grateful that we're having this discussion and um you know, if if everyone could take a, take a look at the points and what was my hope was to to go through uh along with the purposes that Chris has just mentioned to see if if there's some um some common ground that we we could uh agree on. So I don't know if I pleased the board to go through those guidelines.
So so what I said, Lee, was we're going to go the purposes first, then we'll go over the points.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I I don't have any problem with what was said, so.
Okay, that's perfect. Anyone else? Can we agree on these as purposes? So let me stick my neck out. Uh and Eric, just to remind everyone, has recused himself. Do I have a motion to accept these as purposes for our short-term rental bylaw?
I make a Okay, I I make a motion to accept these purposes for the uh general bylaw.
Second. Any discussion?
Just um I just from what Chris said, I'm assuming we're not defining residents um as we did last time. Residents are people who live here.
Yeah, well, well, we we can't that be putting the cart before the horse because we haven't talked about that, but I would assume you're correct.
Okay.
So a role called Garfield. Did I lose Garfield?
Hi, hey, was muted.
Okay, good. Thank you, Garfield. I just can't see you. Sorry. Ed.
Yes.
Lee.
I, yes.
And I, so it's unanimous. So let's go through the uh, I say bullet points are actually numbered points. They may have been bullet points at one point.
Oh, sure. Okay, um.
So we'll let Chris take us through these.
Oh, okay.
Do you uh do you want it on the screen?
Yes, please. And I think you had something you wanted to put up next to it or with it? Or am I mistaken?
Um, I think it would probably, I don't know if I can share two documents at once, and I think for these purposes to to explain them, it might be better just to put that up on its own.
Okay.
Uh I'll highlight that word residence, by the way, just to make sure that we're clear on what that is for the next draft. Okay, okay. So this is uh what Lee shared in the packet. Can everybody see this?
Yes, we can.
Uh Lee, you can speak and just tell me where to drive.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Um so so the big change really from the the previous bylaw that was shared with the planning board and the the select board and housing um subcommittee is that there's no distinction between the primary and non-primary residences. So that's number two. And um so that's, you know, quite a note to draw your attention to. Um number one for in terms of limiting the short-term rentals, um an entire dwelling unit may be rented up to ninety days per calendar year by right.
So let's talk about one at a time, Lee, so that maybe
Sure, I can explain where that
Yeah, each one, I don't. So the first one i- is the ninety days per calendar year. Let's discuss that.
Yeah, um can I just get, give you a sense of where that came from, that number?
Yeah, of course.
Sure. Um so looking at Lennox as a point of reference, um they have uh their limits at seventy-five days and then a hundred and ten days with a special permit. And in talking to the town administrator, they they used um Tanglewood as a general uh reference point, and that's where they came from um to the seventy-five days. So uh ten, ten weeks uh for the Tanglewood, um generally the the schedule for Tanglewood and and they came up to seventy-five days. So ninety days seem to be a good split between those. Um we have a local precedent. And also um looking at the average uh that short-term rentals um charge per night, which is three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Um if you figure that someone is allowed to or permitted to um short-term rental an entire home for ninety days, that equals just over thirty thousand dollars, thirty-one thousand dollars. Um so I felt that this was enough to um to certainly pay for someone's mortgage if they have a second home, if it's a second homeowner. Uh but also um deter uh people from coming in primarily to to make money off short-term rentals. So for me, it seemed like an easy across-the-board uh solution.
Discussion.
Yeah, I would um probably raise that number. Um I don't have a problem with the limit. Um that seems pretty low.
Um what, what would you suggest, Ed?
Um I I don't know, uh a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. Um you know, there's still, that's less than half the year. You know, you have a lot of second homeowners who are only here three, four months um or five months. So I'd make it available more.
Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, um so Ed, I I appreciate that that um suggestion. Again, uh with ninety days, we're um hopefully trying to to deter um folks from actually uh coming in and primarily using housing stock in Great Barrington uh to short-term rental. And I think ninety days is is plenty enough time for someone to um uh regroup or recoup, excuse me, their, the money that they might pay out as a mortgage. So um I think it's a fair balance. And I think uh if you increase the days, you start um getting into that kind of gray territory of people um possibly coming in to primarily uh make money off this rather than just meeting their mortgage. So I um I I appreciate that the second homeowners um want to make as much money as they can and, but I also realize that if other than the ninety days, that they could be also uh using their houses to um for long-term rentals for residents. So um for for me, I think ninety days is is a good um compromise.
But it couldn't be long-term rentals for residents if they're, if it's not available for ninety days of short-term rentals.
I'm saying for the rest of the year. So if if they're using ninety days and they want to use the ninety days to to cover their mortgage, then that means the rest of their home is available for long-term uh rentals.
Nobody's going to rent for seven, eight months, nine months.
That's, I I disagree, Ed. There's plenty of places that um people are looking for homes uh for five weeks, six weeks, three months. Um so again, uh just thinking of the the uh housing crisis with the long-term rentals and the fact that there we we have a um a shortage that I I think that this is a good compromise.
Do we know?
I, I, I I agree with the ninety days. Um I didn't realize it until uh this year when I started getting into the short term and and was elected official, the house right next door to me, the short term and um three months is about the length of the time that I've seen there and I can't and the person that I know, the people that own the home, they don't seem to have an issue with that.
So I wonder if we we have a bore, as a bore can come up with some sort of compromise because there's no magic number here. We don't actually, you know, we we have some theories on this. Uh I think ninety's fine, but I'm willing to go up a little bit if someone's willing to come down and we just figure out a number. It can always be changed on the town meeting floor if we, if we find a reason to. But I I think we're we're moving in the right direction, so let's just talk about something that's we can all agree on.
Do we know on average how many days short-term rentals are rented for? Do we know if we're cutting it back or or allowing more? Because there's a cost to the town for this also, for every day we
Well, Ed, I I would um, you know, I would question that because the the short-term rentals, if if you're saying that you're cutting back on that, people that um, you know No, 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 but I'm saying that if 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 we're limiting it to ninety days, you're saying that that's going to cost the town. And I'm, what I'm saying is that's not necessarily the truth.
Right, how's that?
So um you know, I I think that the argument it doesn't really carry weight because
What I'm not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying that people uh, you know, that want to stay in Great Barrington will stay in Great Barrington, people that want a short-term rental will short-term rental. So you know, we also have to think of the lodging establishments that are losing out because of the um, the uh amount of short-term rentals, so.
So again, I was, I was asking a question, which is do we know how, but we don't know. First of all, uh I've I've stayed in a short-term rental in another town. Um I couldn't have made the trip in a hotel. We would have needed three rooms, it would have been six hundred dollars a night. Um I'm not sure that you have a family coming here, thing is your current rental. If we don't allow it, they're going to look for a town that does. But uh but I'm, really, that wasn't my question. My, my question was, do we know currently? If we're, if we're picking this ninety-day number, do we know what that means? Are we, are we cutting it back? Are we allowing enough? Um is that thirty thousand dollars you came up with enough to cover not just mortgages and other expenses, but the expenses of short-term rental, which are um not insignificant?
So so a couple, couple things, Ed. I think uh Chris is and and Mark are going to come up with some of the answers, some of the data that we asked for. It's just too soon right now, so it's a good question. I again think that we are um, we have our theories of what number is good. We're only, you know, you talked about one twenty, Lee talked about ninety. Let's move on to the next one, but I I would ask in the spirit of compromise, once we get the data that we come up with some number. We're not hundreds off. We're we're pretty close. So we both agree that there should be a limit. We we've agreed to the purpose, so let's let's move on to number two and see which ones we agree on. Let's it's not
Okay.
Sweat sweat each one if we don't totally agree. We're pretty close on number one, so.
Okay, um so number three, up to two bedrooms may be rented year-round, provided that the owner is present.
So so let me just say number two, Lee skipped because I think we all
Oh, yeah, I said that first. So yes, so no distinction between primary, non-primary residences. So um this speaks to some of the concerns that I've heard from um from realtors and from second homeowners and uh you know, with this um non-distinction that it kind of evils, evens out so the playing field, so to speak. Um and this is taken from um the Lennox bylaw, which I was um uh looking at. So I'm just wanted to hide that, highlight that.
Well, the reason I wanted you to bring that up is there are points that we do agree on, and I think we all agree on number two.
Yes, and this was the, you know, the biggest issue I had before. Every other objection I have or or issue I have um is like we just did, it's just working around the edges. Uh so I appreciate that one a lot.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, number three, up to two bedrooms may be rented year-round, provided that the owner is present.
So uh not to get into a debate, I have a bunch of questions. I think if I could just throw them out and Chris can work with them.
Yeah, that's the idea of doing this.
So um say I have a large house not near other houses, why are we limiting the two rooms? If I've got an eight-bedroom house on a big piece of property, not near others. Why, you know, I'm not sure why we would limit it. And then the other question is, the owner is present. Um how are we, how are we going to define owner? Is it just me? Is it me or my spouse? If uh my spouse's name isn't on the deed, does that count? My adult children, my cousin who agrees to stay here and be with her. So I'm, uh the word owner might be a little too um uh specific as opposed to someone responsible on premises caretaker.
I think owner is fine.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
I mean, owners and owners, the person's there, they're the owner. But I don't understand what you mean by your cousin or whatever, or someone, they're not owners, Ed.
Right, but so
That's not an owner. You own your home, you're an owner.
I can explain.
I have my name on, I'm an owner.
I'm not I am not currently married. If I were to get married, my wife wouldn't be the owner of this house. Does that mean I have to physically be here rather than her if we're renting it out? Or my
I'd like to speak to that, actually. Yeah, um you know, these are just bullet points, but in terms of the owner, um someone that's on the deed. So we're we're trying, what this is is saying that um it's it's the person that is on the deed. So whether it's it's the spouse, uh it's one person. Um but really, this is kind of pointing to the fact that we're, we don't want um tenants to be um uh counted as um someone that can uh short-term rental year-round. So the person's name that is on the deed will be considered the the owner and that we're going to have um a natural person that will be represented as the owner of the short-term rental. So again, we're not going to have LLCs. Uh we're not going to have corporations. We're going to have someone that is actually a natural person on the deed. So that's what this speaks to. And and this is to give um, you know, residents that own their properties a chance to uh to make enough money to to live um in this town and uh it's allowing them up to two bedrooms to short-term rental while they're present. So um that's a very, very important distinction. We don't want people um going away and renting short their house um all year round for short-term rentals. So this is very different than an entire unit. This is when the owner is present.
So just about all of my, many of my comments here are about us micromanaging people and what they do in their homes. Um and substituting our judgment for everybody versus people's individual judgment for their homes. Which is why I'm saying if it's, you know, if it's a huge house in the middle of nowhere, why two bedrooms? And if my wife's name isn't on the deed or my adult children who are living with me, um why I can't be gone while we still have it? So that this, again, I'm just throwing this out for Chris. I don't think we need to debate it now.
So can I speak to that, actually?
Yeah, and then let's move on because I I think we we've heard, you know, the the arguments both ways. There may be a compromise in there that the owner or a relative of the owner, it may not be, but let's, Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, um speaking to your, your house in the middle of nowhere, Ed, what what we're trying to discourage or what I'm trying to discourage and and this is um uh exemplified in this bylaw um that I've taken from from uh or looked at and referred to from in Lennox is that you know, we don't want inns to be um popping up in the middle of, you know, the countryside. And we don't want people to to act like they are um established lodging establishments. These are houses. So once you get into you know, people, no matter where they are, whether it's in neighborhood or in the middle of a a mountain, we're trying to discourage people coming in and using them as um these activities. So again, it it's it's a nod to people that have invested in this community that owns their house um that are um on the deed. So that's Invested in this community that owns their house that are on the deed. So that's what this speaks to.
Well, just one more word here, which is the word present. Do they have to be present twenty four seven? Do they have to be actually in the building? Anytime someone's there, do they have to be there overnight? If it's somebody, if I'm there during the day and then I go, and I keep saying, I I have no interest in. Intention ever to short term rental, but would I have to be here the whole time? Could I sleep somewhere else? Or could if I slept here and I was away during the day, I just.
So. So my question, Ed, Ed, is, you know, if you have a problem with this, just say it because many bylaws have been written and it says the owner. You know, it's an owner occupied short term rental. So if you have a problem with this, if you could just say it rather than question that because. Either the owner is there during the the short term rental during the tenancy or they're not. So. You know, having someone show up for a day to to give them the keys and then disappear is not being present. We're actually talking about someone being there, present, occupied during that short term rental. So. You know, handing someone the keys and disappearing is not what we're talking about.
So let's let's move on to the next one and see if we can get a definition.
The objection I have is that we're micromanaging what people do in their homes. Since you asked me, that was, that's the objection.
We can come up with a definition of being present and see if there's some case law.
One thing, please.
Yes.
There are rules that govern us all that may seem general, and so it's kind of. I think your point is moot because there are laws that are just laws that have to be abided by. And they aren't always specific. And there's sometimes they are, sometimes they're a little generally have to read into, but I I don't see an issue.
Let's move on to number four.
Okay, number four, short short term rental occupancy limited to two persons per bedroom with a maximum of ten, whichever is fewer.
So again, I stayed at an Airbnb. I've only done that once. There were two bunk beds in a room, four children stayed there. That's part of what made it affordable. Again, I think we're micro, you know, not to allow the homeowner to use their judgment or what fits and what reasonably fits. If they try and cram too many people in there, they're gonna get negative reviews. I don't know that we. Again, to, you know, what about a fold out couch? Are those not allowed?
So so my question here would be on number four, and I don't, this is a rhetorical question. There's probably a building code for this.
Right.
So let's find out what that is, and I'm sure you can't put ten people in a room that's the size of a closet. So, Lee.
So in my, during my discovery process, I have talked to many realtors about some of the horrors that they've seen in short term rentals. And one of the things that they have relayed to me is the fact that in many short term rentals, they've seen. The occupancy of the short term rentals pushed way beyond what's safe. And what we're trying to discourage is, you know, again, houses being used as hotels and neighborhoods. And by having a limit. You're controlling that. So you you're not making a nuisance in the neighborhood. You're allowing it to happen, but you're not making party houses. So if if people feel like they have to have. More than two persons in the bedroom, then maybe they should be looking at a hotel.
So if if you have a room with has has four beds in it, a lot, a large room in some house with four beds. Or a sofa that folds out and sleeps too. The other issue I have is ten in all zones, right? In my neighborhood, ten would be a lot of people in a house. Far too many, where houses are really close to each other. We have areas where the houses are far apart. Ten people might not be a problem. Why don't we differentiate? By zone or in a commercial zone, it would be different.
They can redo it by zone, Ed. It'll end up being a zoning bylaw and we're not trying to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know it would have been decided we're trying not to do that.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
I don't know if it's been decided or not.
Okay, right. I I had not heard. This is the first time that's come up. Well, the the last time I asked, I was told we would, we'd find out after we were done if this is. Likely to be zoning or.
We're not, we're not done. And but I know the, I thought the planning board had recommended it be a. General bylaw. Lee, go ahead.
Again, Ed, you know, we're we're trying to think about some of the feedback we've received from neighborhoods and. You know, once to have limits in neighborhoods and to be respectful of of people that, you know, that have invested in this community. And that don't expect to be living next to hotels and and ends. I think to have a limit is is very is is. It's a good compromise. So, you know, with the, you know, with this limit of two persons per bedroom. For a maximum of ten, that that respects the residents that actually live here full time, that have invested in this community. So. Again, you know, I have a question if, you know, when you're looking at this, you seem to be favoring the the part time owners. And I'm trying to shift it back to the full time owners and making a compromise. So I feel this is a very, very sound compromise.
This has nothing to do with your part time or full time. In my neighborhood, in a lot of neighborhoods, ten would be far too many. I absolutely agree, but in some areas, some houses, some neighborhoods, some zones, it wouldn't be too many. So it's not, I'm not, this, this is, doesn't matter. Whether the person who owns the house is there year round or not. The question is how how much space is in the house? And again, I think we're telling people what to do with their homes in a way. I get what you're trying to do. I think this doesn't necessarily A accomplish it, but in my neighborhood, ten would be far too many. No matter how big the house is, because there'd be ten people sitting in the backyard at night making noise when I'm five feet from my neighbor. But some areas, that isn't a problem.
So I I, you know, I I don't want to get into this in terms of, you know, we're trying to keep this movement going and I respect your. Your comments, Ed, but again, what we're trying to, at least in what I have seen is we're trying to avoid the big party houses. We're trying to avoid people that are renting out these for events to 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 put as many people and make as much money as possible. We we don't want these to be commercial ventures. We want these to be homes. So again, I think we're we're giving people the allowance and the ability to make money. But we don't want these to turn into party houses. So whether you have a big mansion or a small house. It says whichever is fewer. I think this is a nice compromise. It's it's able to be enforced. So if we have a limited across the board, then, you know, whether it's a big mansion or, you know, an apartment, I think this is a fair, a fair compromise.
We absolutely don't want party houses, although that's not on your list. That's one of the things I've added. You left off about parties and tents and outdoor music.
And and this is just the, this is the main point.
We don't want party houses. What I'm saying is ten is an arbitrary number and it's different in different areas.
Let's go on to number.
Number five, thank you very much, Ed. Number five, if more than one dwelling unit exists on a single parcel. For example, ADU, the ninety day applies to the parcel, the limit apportioned among those dwelling units.
Any comment on that?
Number six, only one dwelling may be used as a short term rental on the parcel at a time.
So I guess, again, ask why, if there are, one of them has two bedrooms, the other has one bedroom. You're dealing with three bedrooms according to the earlier limits. That's, why does it matter that it's two different structures?
Again, well, can I answer that? So again, we're trying to focus this on the people that live here, long term residents and full timers. And by by, you know, putting these limitations on, again, you're not having someone that's gonna come in. Looking to make as much money as possible from a parcel that has more than one unit on that. So. It's just limiting, it's it's focusing what people are trying to do with the short term rentals. It's giving them plenty of ability to make money. But again, you know, limitations will will prevent people from from coming in and and just trying to make money off this. And, you know, again, we're trying to think of the the reasons why people want to live here full time and just, you know. Have some kind of regulations that is a compromise. So. That's the reason why this, and this is also something taken from Lennox. So it's not like we're, you know, we're doing something that has never been done. Many. Municipalities have used this point and it's nothing that I've come up with. So again, Lennox has has used this and it's worked very well for them.
So again, I, whether you have an ADU or not, it has no bearing on whether you're. Full time or part time, which I also thought we weren't gonna, that's not one of the purposes. But my question is, if you have a total of three bedrooms, why does it matter if it's in two units or one unit? I I I don't, I just don't see why we're, again, micromanaging that decision.
I'm concerned, you've both made your points. Let's move on.
Okay, sure. Number seven, registration required. The registrant shall be the name of the natural person who is the property owner.
So I I will tell you that I think this, I feel strongly that registration should be required, that the. Town needs to have a list, an organized list, that every business. Registers with the town and this should be no different. So I would agree with that.
Uh, number eight.
No, no, let's hear everyone. There may be other.
So was I.
I don't get the, I don't get the final word.
Yeah, I agree with it as well.
You know, again, we, you know, the state makes you register. You can't do it if you're not registered, but I'm. I think you're making people jump through a hoop. It's a small hoop, so it's, that's fine.
Number eight.
Number eight, registration includes a testing to compliance with building sanitary sanitary zoning or fire code requirements, laws or regulations.
So my only fear here, and I have no idea, I don't know what this entails. So if we say this. Will that require fire escapes, lighted signs? Sprinkler systems, you know, I, the way it's written in Lennox is actually a lot. Gentler than that. They say they want smoke detectors and fire extinguishers.
So could I clarify this, actually, Steve? This is just points to focus the conversation, Ed. So if you looked at the the bylaw that I wrote. In the previous version, that is is defined. So we're talking about functional carbon monoxide detectors and and. Smoke alarm, smoke alarm. So again, this is kind of a a way to focus the discussion, but it's not gonna be how it's in the bylaw. So. We are not talking about sprinklers. We're not talking about fire escapes. So just to answer that question.
Okay, so I'd like, I guess, Chris to talk to the building inspector just to make sure we're not doing something here that would trigger that.
Well, just just to be, just to be clear, if the building code or fire code or any other state code requires something more than is in the local bylaw, it will be required. That something more will be required. You can't abrogate.
So as long as we're not defining something in a way that then triggers that, that it wouldn't have been triggered that otherwise. And I don't know that that's true or possible. I'm just asking.
Okay.
And it just may need an exemption of some sort from attesting to compliance with building sanitary zoning. If you're a preexisting non-conforming unit. You're not conforming to zoning, right? Does that mean you can't do short term rental? Or do we need to say something specifically? Allowing preexisting non-conforming units to continue.
Can you answer that one?
No, I'll think about it.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I mean, that probably zoning might not be correct here because it's not regulated. So preexisting non-conforming units would not be working in this. So this would be. You know, if this dwell, if if this bylaw takes effect, it would be the date that it it comes to effect. So. Anything not in compliant would would have to fall in in line with this.
If they have to attest that they're following all the zoning rules and they're not, for example, my house isn't, I'm too close to the property line. I can't attest to following all the zoning.
That that's what I'm saying. It's it's an error on my part. Zoning should not be this.
So we may take that word out.
Yeah, so so that'll be, yes, thanks for pointing that out. Should I go to number nine, Steve?
I think so.
Okay, registration also includes a testing to the posting of instructions at the rental for recycling. Waste disposal, parking and locally available contact information. Number ten, annual inspection required, cost covered by the property owner.
So that I just have a question, you know, who's doing the inspecting? What are they inspecting for? And can current staff handle it?
It, this may be a question when the building code changes, if it changes. Then inspections may have to be required anyway for short term rentals, so. Have some language in there that refers to that.
Yeah, again, this is just to kind of focus that and I think that the the specifics can be worked out.
And I think it's a reasonable question that we find out from the building inspector. A little more detail, but I think i- in theory, it's a good idea.
Yeah, just to clarify the reasons why I I made the note of cost covered by the property owner because I didn't want the town or taxpayers to incur any. Additional expenses. And obviously, I don't have the the cost in front of me, but I just wanted to make a note that. You know, whether it's a permit fee or how that would be worked out, that the property owner would be covering it, not the taxpayers.
Okay.
Number eleven, inspection includes verification of functional smoke detectors and carbon monoxide alarms. So. At this, this speaks to what we were talking about on number eight.
Eleven can be merged together.
Yeah, again, this is just talking point, so absolutely, yeah.
I would add fire extinguishers to that.
Yep.
Makes sense.
So number twelve, tenants prohibited from operating short term rentals, no short term rental subleasing.
So we agree on that one, it sounds, I'm saying. So. What we've done tonight, and it's only a short period of time, we've agreed on some things. We've disagreed on others and we agreed a little bit on certain things, but we we want more clarification. That's what I was hoping for tonight. Chris will come back, may not be the next meeting, with some more information and with. More written. A bylaw that's written so that we can then discuss the actual bylaw, but I think we're we're getting there. We're we're agreeing on some things. We're not agreeing on others, but maybe we can compromise. And we also have to get more information. We have to get data and we have to talk to the building inspector. And I don't, I don't think, I think we've made progress tonight. We're not there yet, but I think we're we're getting there.
Yes.
I I'm a little confused on the process, just does this, is this now instead of all the proposals we've had before this? Because there's some things that we didn't mention tonight, corporate event.
These were only bullet points. Chris will. Come back to us with some of those points in addition to these in in one bylaw. And if there's things that were left out, we can talk about it. If there are things that were put in that shouldn't be, we'll talk about it. So no, we're, this is, these. Twelve points are not all that's gonna be in the bylaw. You're correct.
Yeah, yeah.
The major points.
Yeah, exactly. This was just really to focus the discussion, Ed, so we could, you know, pick at the the issues that might be contentious and some of the. The points in the previous bylaws will be worked into the next bylaw proposal.
Are are there broad points? I'm sorry, risk asking, are there broad points we didn't cover tonight?
I can read a list really quickly.
Yeah, if you would like to, that'd be great.
If you can read the list and send it to me, that might be helpful. I can try to.
Some of the earlier versions had a prohibition of corporate events. I'm sorry, of corporate owned units participating. I think Stockbridge said no corporations except LLCs. And then the second one is meetings and corporate retreats and things like that. Planning board's version said not in residential zones, but okay in other zones. Grandfathering, if limits are imposed, there's a people who are already doing it or not, penalized, stopping people who already do it isn't the goal. For oh, prohibition on affordable housing and income restricted housing, doing it. Events, I got ten signs outside and no dumpsters. Should I type, send it to you or you got them?
I'd love if you could type it and send it to me.
It does were included in the what the version I had as well. So I would like to speak to the grandfathering. I I. Feel that, or I'd like to ask Chris to look into that because I believe that because short term rentals are. Aren't regulated right now, that there wouldn't be an ability to 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 allow for the grandfathering.
So let's get a legal opinion on that, or or Chris's opinion or Mark's.
For for general bylaws, there is no, there is no such thing as preexisting non-conforming. So it's like I always use the analogy of a dog license to general bylaw. Whether you had a dog last year and the bylaw just went into place, you still need to register your dog, get the rabies shots. So zoning has more of a due process and and. Component to it, and that's why there are those. Certain rights that are vested, we say, that can, you can be legally preexisting non-conforming. Try to avoid the term grandfathering, but for general bylaws, that doesn't apply. And I think the the points that you've discussed here tonight. Hue more to a general bylaw that is on. So I I don't think. Creating non-conformities or so-called grandfathered short term rentals will will occur.
The planning board version had that, was that?
Planning board version suggested limits and made, made that provision, suggested a provision for applicability to certain units when, when they are registered with the Commonwealth. So their just to paraphrase their rationale there and, and that bylaw, which was in your packet last meeting. Their rationale was if somebody came in and, and did a lot of property improvements and had bookings out for the next year, then the provisions within the planning board's proposal, not the provisions you discussed tonight, but the provisions in the planning board's proposal could be detrimental to people who had, had done that, made significant investments and had booked out for a while. It could really infringe on, on, on what they've done. I don't think you're dealing in the same, with the same sorts of restrictions that the planning board had, had proposed. So I don't think you need that at this point.
Okay, Chris. Ed, do you have anything else?
Um, no, I got the whole list.
Okay, so we will come back. Possibly at the next meeting. We could come back as soon as next Monday night when we're doing goals. We know the goals only take about an hour. So if we wanted to continue this discussion and do it in short pieces, which makes it easier and less painful, we may do that, but we'll see how far staff has to come back and and you'll see whether it's on the agenda or not. We'll decide on Wednesday and we'll let everyone. That's okay.
Super.
Okay, so I know a couple of people have their hands up and we're not ready to discuss this. While we're, while we're discussing it, but during citizen speak, I will recognize the two people have their hands up first and and there will be, there will be much opportunity to speak, but first I wanted to get the board through this. So let's start with, I think we're up to citizen speak. So Tony S. And remember it's three minutes, state your name and address.
Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, I apologize. First, I'd like to apologize. I'm, I'm on a road trip, so I don't have any notes. I'm just kind of speaking as I go here. Three fifty four North Plain Road, Tony Sagala. I just want to touch on number one real quick, the ninety day limit. And my only concern, and I know we looked at Linux, I like Linux, what they did up there. But the only difference I see with us and Linux is we are a big summer community, but we're also, we pride ourselves on our ski community. I think by limiting us to saying, oh, you know, ninety days, it takes care of the summer, but what about, what about butternut? And I would think we're forgetting about what a big part of that community, of the community, they bring, they bring a lot of people to our town and, and Great Barrington kind of perks up in the winter. And Linux, on the other hand, shuts down in the winter. It's a very sleepy town in January and February, even on the holidays. They get a little bit, but not like butternut. So I will say, I think that, I, I think we need to look a little closer at that. Just out of respect for the businesses, they get a lot of business that time of year, bringing those ski families in. And also, I don't think we should really you know, butternut struggles really a lot as it is, you know, trying to keep up and, you know, I feel like families might go to a different town and consider a different mountain if we're not as accepting to bring them in. So that's all I'm saying about that. And I hope that, also like to say, I, I appreciate the compromise. I think we're moving in the right direction. Everyone's efforts is, is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next is someone near and dear to all of us, Eric Abriel. Go ahead, Eric.
Hello, everybody. Eric Abriel, ten fifty two Main Street, who's the tonic? I just wanted to say, speaking for myself as a resident of Great Barrington, very happy to see all the debate and compromise and all the hard work that's going into this short term rental thing. Definitely not a cut and dry situation we have here and it makes me happy how the debates are going and the give and take is happening. So one thing I did want to mention, very happy that on the bullet point number two, not taking any distinctions between the primary and non-primary residents. And then just personally, I'm concerned with the bylaw just because I, I feel that limiting property rights should always be a super majority for that thing. But other than, you know, th- those are my two thoughts on that, but I really appreciate all the hard work everybody's doing and look forward to hearing more debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Londoner.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
John Londoner, nine Francis Avenue. Full disclosure, I run a short term rental that is exactly what you guys are targeting. It is a second home that I purchased to specifically bring vacationers to the area. I think that ninety days is not very generous to people in my situation, people in Tony Sagala's situation. Basically, that allows me to break even. So that doesn't, you know, reflecting on my big investment that I made into the property doesn't really sound like something I want to continue. And also I would say that if you are someone in my situation who is running a full time Airbnb, to only have it available for ninety days basically says that for the other nine months out of the year, my house is uninhabited. And anybody who owns a home knows that the worst thing you can do for it is to leave it uninhabited. Nobody's checking in on it, vermin come in, I'm subject to more theft. There, you know, things can go wrong, pipes can freeze. It's just, anybody who owns a house knows that to leave that house alone, especially for nine months, is the worst thing to do for a house. Ed, I think you know the house. It's on the corner of Francis and Prospect. I put a lot of work into it. I think I've done a lot of justice to the community. And to leave that for nine months and let it fall back into disrepair, I don't think that does the town a service, certainly doesn't do me a service. So I think everybody sort of loses on that. And that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Eileen Moonick.
I had a question. On number four, with a maximum of ten, and is it ten people or ten bedrooms? Something else.
Lee, go ahead, just.
Ten, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's ten, it's ten people, Eileen. So it's, it's two persons per bedroom with a maximum of ten people, whichever is fewer. So ten people maximum per short term rental.
When that is written, assuming that the sentence stays somewhere in the proposed bylaw, somebody might put ten people to clarify.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Eileen, this is just kind of talking points to focus the discussion. Absolutely. This will be clarified.
I know, but sometimes things get picked up inadvertently.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Frederica Siegel.
Hi, thank you. Frederica Siegel, twenty seven Roundhill Road. I admire the effort that you're putting into this and I admire the compromise and the collegiality. At a previous meeting, we are, we are one of the gang of fifty six. Also a subset of the two hundred. At a previous meeting, I thought I understood that there was going to be an effort to maybe to do some digging into the data of each one of the two hundred Airbnb short term rentals. And you seem to have abandoned that effort. And I think it's an opportunity lost to move ahead with the bylaw that doesn't really, that's not data based.
Just to explain, and I did say it, but I maybe passed over, the data, this isn't all compiled yet. We, we haven't thrown that out. That will come to us.
All right. Well, I hope that you wait until you've gotten the data. There's many unique situations that your decision would be enhanced by waiting to understand.
We will.
Okay, that's very good. And thanks so much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else with their hand up, Garfield, I realize yours, yours hand up. We'll just do it under select board time if you're okay with that.
I am absolutely fine.
Okay, so let's go to select board time and we will start with Garfield.
Okay, I don't know if I can address the ninety day that the gentleman spoke of, or do I, you want me to wait? Because that's what I wanted to speak about.
You, you, you can speak about that now. That's fine.
Well, when he said that sometime in the winter, and sometimes they, butternut doesn't do well, et cetera. There's nothing that says that whoever has their short term rental homes can't plan them around that time. So I don't know if that's a good argument that he had. If you have a short term rental and you want to get in on the ski action, then you'll plan it around that. If you want to do it in the summer, then you'll do it then. I don't think that should matter as far as with ninety days. I think the ninety days are fine. You choose to use them when you want.
Thank you, Garfield. Eric, you're back.
Oh, yes, back. I am all set up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? Nothing. Lee?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to, to thank everyone. You know, this is a contentious issue and it hasn't been easy for any one of us. And I know it's, it's been difficult for a lot of residents and second homeowners and realtors to watch the process, but I just want you to know that this is a discovery period and, and in the end, we all want what's best for the community. So I just really want to thank everyone that's reached out and offered their suggestions and comments. So.
And I have nothing. Media time. And at that unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.